Morning, everyone. Welcome to the Judiciary Committee hearing for this Friday morning. My name is Carl Rhodes. I'm the Chair of the Committee. This Zoom meeting and YouTube livestream event will include the following agenda. Our 9:30 AM JDC agenda for to consider House bills. The other members of the committee, our Vice Chair Jerick Kio Kaloli, Senator Laura Casio, Senator Mike Gabbert, Senator Chris Lee, Senator Donna Mercado Kim, I think that was excused today, and Senator Kirk Pavella. This meeting, including the audio and video, remote participants, it's being streamed live on YouTube. You will find links to viewing options for all Senate meetings on the live and on-demand video page of the Legislature's website. Oh, and Senator Kim is here. Thank you. We're glad you could join us. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to major technical difficulties, the Committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Tuesday, March 23rd, at 10:05 AM in a public notice that we posted on the Legislature's website. For the people testifying remotely, all testifier audio will be muted and video disabled until your turn to testify. There is a two-minute time limit for testifier, and there's a countdown clock that you can watch as you testify. If there are temporary technical glitches during your turn to testify, we may have to move on to the next person due to time constraints. We appreciate your understanding. We remind you, the Committee has already received your written testimony, and we will try to come back to you if can. I'll be reading a list of people who testified written, who submitted written testimony for each measure. We apologize if the closed captioning doesn't accurately transcribe the names. If you're interested in reviewing the written testimony, please go to the Legislature's website, www dot capital with an O dot Y dot gov, and find a link to the testimony on the status page for the measure that you're, the measure or measures that you're interested in. And, okay, so I believe that's it. Members and, and people attending, I was unable to print something that I usually print, so I'm gonna have to be switching back and forth. So it may be a little slower than usual. So just bear that in mind. And first up today is HB 490. HB 490 lowers the age with penalties apply for crimes against seniors from 62 to 60, and makes commission of certain criminal offenses against a senior's personal property applicable if the perpetrator knows or reasonably should know the senior, the senior victim's age. First up on HB 490 is Ali S. Hayakawa for the Public Defender.
Hi, good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Committee. Good morning. My name is Lee Hayakawa. I'm appearing on behalf of the Office of the Public Defender. And the Office of the Public Defender respectfully opposes in part and supports in part HB number 490. We will be standing on our written testimony, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Carolyn Kadira, Kadirao for the, for Department of Health Executive Office on Aging and Support. Michael Kunashima for Honolulu Police Department. Don't see him. HPD is in support. Robert Rivera for Maui Department of the Prosecuting Attorneys. Good morning.
Good morning, Committee Chair Senator Rhodes, as well as Vice Chair and, and the other members of the Committee. We were the ones that authored this last year, and we did make that significant change where we removed the strict liability portion of this bill. And as Mr. Hayakawa stated, the standard now is the age of the victim is known or reasonably should have been known to the offender. We believe and we're hoping that this will provide greater protection for seniors who have been targeted more so in the past year and a half, as well as deter those who do target our seniors for property crimes as well as crimes against persons. I'm available for any questions should they're reading from the Committee.
Great, thank you. Next up is Paul K. Ferreira for the Hawaii Police Department in Support. HMS APCS Lisa Amador.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee members. Lisa Amador, Protective and Community Services Administrator. DHS stands on our written testimony. Apologize for the late submission, and I'm available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And that was in support. Next is Mary Gilmeister for testifying for Maka in support, Michael Gloy, Senior in support, Len Murakami Akatsuka in support, Beverly Gattelli in support, Dar Carlin in support, Eliina Hunakoshi in support, Mark Tom or Scott Spolina for prosecuting attorney. Don't see them.
I'm so sorry. Good morning. Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Deputy Prosecutor Tricia Nakamoto appearing on behalf of the Honolulu Prosecuting Attorney's Office. I'm sorry, Scott Spolina, the head of our elder abuse division was supposed to be here, but he's having some technical difficulties right now. If for now, we could just stand on a testimony and allow him to, I think he's trying to jump on.
Okay. Thank you.
Allow in a minute. Thank you.
And next is Kathy Betts, Director for DHS, also in support. That's all the testimony we have on HB 490. Members, any questions? Okay, let me see. Okay, I don't have any questions either, so thank you testifiers for being here, and we'll go ahead and move on to the next measure, which is HB 566 relating to abuse of a family or household member.
I'm sorry, here to interrupt.
Yes.
Rather than deal the technicalities I just asked.
We'll back up. Go ahead, Mr. Spolina.
Hey, Chair. A little over a year ago, I actually was over there at the Capitol testifying for this and advocating that it be passed. A year later, I'm doing this by Zoom because the world has changed in that year. Over a year ago, Oahu was seeing an increase in violent crimes against seniors. We had a lot of purse snatchings going on. We had this prime going through the roof, and that's one reason that I was strongly advocating for this bill. In the past year, the world has changed except for elder abuse. Elder abuse is still happening. People are still being targeted because of their age. We're still getting more violent crimes happening to our seniors. The state's hope in this bill being passed is that it'll send a message that to leave seniors alone, to leave anybody that even looks like they're old alone. If you mess with them, you're looking at felony charges. If you target them, you're looking at jail time. If you steal from them, it's a serious crime now, not just something where you're gonna get slapped on the wrist and then go away. Seniors need to be protected because right now they're being targeted. And the Office of the Honolulu Prosecutor's Office feels that this bill will help put a warning sign instead of a target sign, a warning sign over seniors saying, "Don't mess with them." The word is going to get out on the street. Criminals talk to criminals, and they'll realize that, hey, if you even look dirty at a senior citizen, you're going to get in big trouble. And so I hope that this board will consider passing this bill to the next stage because the seniors of Oahu need it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Members, any questions for this testifier? If not, well, thank you very much for being here, Mr. Spolina, and we'll go ahead and move on to the next bill, which is HB 566 relating to abuse of family or household members. This adds coercive control between family or household members to the offense of abusive family or household members as a petty misdemeanor. First up on 566 is Darcia Forrester for the Office of Public Defender.
Aloha, Chair Rhodes and members of the Committee. My name's Darcia Forrester. I'm with the Office of the Public Defender. Our office strongly opposes House Bill 566 HD1. We have outlined in our written testimony a number of serious issues we have with this particular measure. However, I would like to highlight that we do have constitutional concerns about the overbroad language, and the overbroad definitions, and the overbroad scope of this measure based on the current definition of coercive control. We strongly urge this Committee to look closely at the definition of coercive control in HRS Section 586-1 and review our written testimony. We did provide numerous examples of how a law-abiding citizen can get caught up in the criminal justice system and accused of a crime, the crime of abuse based on behavior that perhaps should not be criminalized. We understand the intent, but this measure as currently written or using the current definition may criminalize normal disagreements that family and household members have. We are also very concerned about the ease that this measure as currently written may be used as a weapon to further establish power and control by an abuser over a person who's already experiencing abuse. Thank you, and I am available for questions if needed.
Thank you. Next up is Landon M. Marata, Deputy Attorney General in Opposition, Angelo Mercado for Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence. Good morning. Can't hear you. I can see you, but you can't hear you. Okay, there you go.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair Kio Kaloli, and Committee members. I'm Angelina Mercado with the Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence and submitting testimony in support for this measure. I know that there has been some concerns about the broad nature of the definition, but we can tell you on behalf of our survivors who have been victimized by name-calling and isolation, that this is a very real way to be victimized, and many survivors are not subject to a lot of the physical violence and bruising that may be presented to programs and to the court and to law enforcement. And I also want to call attention to the very fact that the concern that the community has for survivors of domestic violence during this pandemic is the very fact that they are being at home and potentially isolated from their resources, family, support networks. And this is something that's not new. The pandemic has not really brought this on. The pandemic has already highlighted something that's existing and very real for survivors of domestic violence. Secondly, I would also, I would also invite the Committee to look at the fact that the CDC takes very, very serious the definitions of coercive control, including name-calling, isolation, et cetera. And it becomes, it's actually something that's very much studied and has a lot of that, of resources dedicated to them. And finally, as we are receiving stimulus payments throughout the country, we know that financial control is often something that's used when there is an attempt of power and control, and we're very concerned about survivors whose stimulus payments may be got from them by their abusers, which is again falls under the definitions included in the state. Thank you again for this opportunity to provide testimony and here for any questions you may have.
Great, thank you very much. Next up is Youngji Overly for AAUW of Hawaii in support Nancy Creedman, Domestic Violence Action Center in support Lori Fields, Planned Parenthood Votes Northwest in Hawaii in support Michael Gloy, Senior in support Thomas Farrell, Esquire in Opposition, Dar Carlin in support, Mark Tom, Department of the Prosecuting Attorney for Honolulu.
And.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, filling in for Mark Tom. Tricia Nakamoto, Deputy Prosecuting Attorney, Honolulu Prosecuting Attorney's Office. Will stand on our written testimony. While we support the intent, we do have concerns about the language. Available for questions if any.
Thank you. Let's see, who's next? Randall Platt testifying for Honolulu Police with comments, Carrie Urassevich for Early Childhood Action Strategy in support, Patricia Bullock in support. That's all the testimony we have on HB 566. Members, any questions?
Chair, we may have Deputy Attorney General present for testimony. Landon, Landon Marata.
Go ahead.
Good morning. I, I apologize. I am present to testify on another bill. We submitted written testimony only on this one, but I'm available for any questions.
Okay, great. Thanks. Okay, members, any questions on 566? Okay, let me see if I have any. Nope. Okay, there are no questions. We'll go ahead and move on to HB 891 relating to electric guns. Regulate the sale and use of electric guns and cartridges. First up on 891 is Amy Murakami, Deputy Attorney General.
And good mornings. Chair Rhodes and members of the Committee. The Department of the Attorney General strongly supports this bill. The purpose of this bill is to protect the health and safety of the public by regulating the sale and use of electric guns. The constitutionality of Hawaii's electric gun bill was drawn into question by the United States Supreme Court decision in Kaitano versus Massachusetts. And there is a currently pending lawsuit in the United States District Court for the District of Hawaii in which a party is seeking to invalidate Hawaii's electric gun ban. The passage of this bill is necessary to protect public safety. The bill repeals Hawaii's ban on electric guns and creates a regulatory scheme that restricts the use of of electric guns to self-defense, defense of others, and protection of property, requires sellers of electric guns to be licensed, conduct a criminal background check on buyers, and keep records of inventory and sales. It prohibits persons under the age of 21 from owning, possessing, or controlling electric guns, and it creates criminal offenses for the use and possession of electric guns in a commission of a misdemeanor or felony. The Department asks the Committee to pass this bill, and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Dave Nielsen for Honolulu Police Department. Major, I can't remember. Assistant Chief Major, I can't remember. Sorry.
That's Major, sir. Thank you very much for the almost promotion. Good morning, Chair Rhodes and members. David Nielsen, Major of the Records and Identification Division at Honolulu Police Department, City and County of Honolulu. The HPD supports House Bill 891 as amended in HD2 relating to electric guns. We greatly appreciate the House and the Senate working to remove some of the provisions that would have challenged us significantly, and we think that this is a good way to start with this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Paul K. Ferreira for Hawaii Police Department in support. Elliot K. Kay for Kauai Police Department in support. Andrew Namiki Roberts for the Hawaii Firearms Coalition.
Good morning, Chair, Committee members. My name is Andrew Namiki Roberts. I'm a Director for Hawaii Firearms Coalition. I'm also the plaintiff in the lawsuit against the state to overturn their ban on electric weapons. So I'm very familiar with these weapons, very familiar in how they work and what our current laws are, and how these laws that are being proposed will affect law-abiding citizens. The background check system that they're trying to put in place doesn't currently exist in a method where outside organizations such as gun stores or those wishing to sell them will be able to access that system and use it correctly. There's also an issue with regards to how that data is transmitted to these gun stores. There's a lot of confidential and private information that's included in a background check that is not needed to be seen by a third party. When police departments do these background checks, there's a lot of regulations that are in place that protect that privacy. There's also a lot of regulations that are in place, for example, with the firearms background checks as to who can see that data and how it's shared. Now you're talking about transmitting that data to a private organization that can then do whatever they want with that data. The background check system wouldn't work in itself because these arms are readily available online. You can buy these right now from China or from third-party sellers in the mainland, have them shipped to Hawaii with no regulatory need. Right now, if you go down to the swap meet at the Honolulu Stadium, you can buy tasers and stun guns at the swap meet today with no regulations, even though they are illegal. Having this background check system, this registration system, and these permitting systems that have been proposed in place will do nothing to deter crime. These arms are designed for self-defense. A Taser Pulse, the civilian model of the Taser, is a single-use weapon that's designed for somebody to use in self-defense, and once you pull the trigger, that's it. It's done. In fact, it's so often used in this method that the company that manufactures them will replace your Taser Pulse for free if you have a police report.
Thank you very much. Next up is Todd Yukutake. Is, yes, he's signed up. There you are. Good morning.
Morning, Committee. Chair, Vice Chair, Todd Yukutake, and I oppose HB 891 and request amendments. There's a lot of problems with this bill, but overall, on the mainland, you can purchase a taser or electric gun online, and I have it in my testimony too, through Amazon, and have it shipped to your door with no restrictions in almost all states. But I'll just go through some of the problems I noticed. First of all, the most glaring one is electric guns cannot be used by other people for protection. Only the owner can use it. So let's say there's a home invasion at your house. You're not home. Your spouse is home, and there's a taser on the table. They cannot use it to defend themselves according to this, to this law. Also, those under 21 cannot use it either, and they're the ones who are probably the most needed the most because when they're out in public, a lot of them don't have cars. They might catch the bus to work, to school, walk to school through high crime areas. They won't be able to buy a taser because of this bill. Also, this bill does not address a carry in public, which is very important. That's where you see all of the, the carjackings, the sexual assaults, all of the crime in the neighborhoods and in the city. This would, might still be considered a deadly and dangerous weapon per HRS 134-51, so please address this in this bill where you can carry it in public because, because of the rising violent crime out there. Let me see. Electric guns are safe. I was tased for HPD training at the HPD Academy. My entire class of, I think there were about 30 of us, got tased as part of training. So we got tased. We fell to the ground, got back up perfectly fine, so they are safe to use.
Thank you very much. Next is Marcus Tanaka.
Hello.
Good morning.
I stand by my testimony and just wanted to reiterate that if you're gonna make something legal because courts ruled, you have to make it legal. The whole concept should be make it legal, but not, let's make it, also, let's regulate it heavily. Let's make it, let's regulate the sellers so they have to jump through a lot of the hoops. You know, the point is taser should be legal. Like the, like Todd mentioned, you should be able to buy it on Amazon, have it shipped to my door with two-day Prime shipping. Whoever's I give permissive use to should be able to use it as well, not only myself because I bought it. You know, so that's about all I had. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see who's next here. Brian Isaacson in opposition, Rita Kama Kimura in opposition, Eric Kanashiro in opposition, Kristy Guzman in opposition, Joel Berg in opposition, Vanelle Puros in opposition, John Abbott in opposition, and George Pace in opposition. That's all the testimony we have on 891. Members, questions?
I have a question for. I have a question for Major Nielsen if he's available. Maybe, oh yeah, there he comes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you and good morning. I just had a question. Can you give information as to your understanding of tasing minors? Maybe effects.
Tasing minors?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I don't believe I understand the question.
Are, like, for example, are there different effects on minors? And, and also maybe even from, from your, the perspective of the police force using tasing on minors?
That is unfortunately outside my area of expertise. I would have to reach out to the, the Training Academy that does our, as our subject matter experts on that. They might be able to answer that question if you would like. I can get back to you on that, Senator.
Okay, thank you. That would be great, but understand if it's beyond your scope. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Members, any other questions? If not, Major, I have a question for you too.
Sure.
So I'm, I'm assuming that there's no personal registration requirement in here because the counties felt like they couldn't keep up. Is that? Is that basically?
The counties running the registrations would overwhelm our system because it would be the same system that we use to register firearms because the original bill mirrored that procedure. In the bill, there's, as written now in the HD2, there's provisions where the licenses that sell the sell the tasers will provide lists to the counties once we license them of who has, has purchased a taser and gone through the taser class from the licensing.
Okay, so I mean, this doesn't, I mean, in a perfect world, would you want to register electric gun owners?
Personally, sir, when I looked at how other states do it, there are 37, 38 other states that have actually no restrictions other than you have to be 18 or in some states 21, I believe, to have a taser. I, I, my bosses would have to answer that. The Attorney General would need to weigh in on that, sir. A little above my pay grade.
All right. A question for the, I think it's Amy Murakami with the Department of, yeah, there we go. I couldn't see her full name here. So as it, the HD2, the question was raised about concealed carry. Is, are there concealed carry laws that apply to regular firearms, apply to electric guns as well?
They were not put into, they were not mirrored into this bill, so the firearm concealed carry restrictions are only to the firearms. Previous testifier reference 134-51, but the anticipation is that is going to be in a separate section and generally because the electric guns were are in its own section, the anticipation is that would not apply, that there was not an intention.
So that was, but in your, in your original draft, that was the case too. You're, you're okay with having, I'm just, I mean, I, I'm just trying to figure out whether is that something that you would prefer to, that it concealed carry apply, or does, you think it doesn't matter because it's not as lethal?
It's, electric guns are not as lethal, and for many like stun guns, they would have to be carried in a purse or otherwise in a, not an open carry. So that was the consideration that was given to that matter.
Then I guess the other, only other question ahead was there is a provision in the bill, the HD2, about internet sales. So internet sales will be subject to this bill, correct?
Correct, because it's, the bill itself says any sales that intended to be in Hawaii.
So an internet, how would an internet seller deal with that? They could still get a license to sell in Hawaii and go, jump through the, and do check the boxes for, for sales here? Is that the way it would work?
That, that would be the anticipation, and the, the bill itself does anticipate it by stating that while a store in Hawaii would have to have a physical copy posted, internet sales would have to post it on their website that they do have a license from Hawaii.
Okay. And then one, just one. Just a question about the status of the lawsuit that Mr., I'm sorry, I can't see your full name either. Namiki. What's the status right now?
Currently, it is pending in the federal district court. The proceedings were stayed for the Young case to be decided. There's another firearms case that is pending in federal district court, so the federal court. So um, the federal court said that they were staying.
How are those two cases connected?
They're both regarding firearms since the electric guns um touches upon the Second Amendment. The young case is about concealed carry in Hawaii.
Okay, I got you. I remember. Okay, I didn't know that's the name. I knew there was a case. I didn't know what it was called.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Members, any other questions?
Yeah, Chair.
Senator Favela, go ahead.
Or uh HPD, or maybe if you can answer the question. Yeah, the question um that I have is that in the since uh we have the stun gun or electric guns uh in Hawaii, how much unlawful uh usage that you think that we had over the years?
It's not a significant amount, Senator. To, to, to my knowledge, it's uh, I, I know personally of, of no cases where, where tasers have been used, but I'm sure there have been some instances, but it's uh, right now, it's, it's not, it's a negligible number.
Thank you. Chair, the only reason why I guess, um, I guess, can I talk to, uh, I guess Amy?
Sure, go ahead if you're still here. Is it more coming? There we go.
I'm sorry, Senator. Uh, could you repeat the question?
Uh, the question was about the crime, but what I wanted to ask you is that there's a lot of people um in Hawaii, especially with all the heavy, heavy gun restrictions and gun laws, and a lot of families that is afraid to have firearms in the house. Uh, this is an alternative for them to have uh a non so-called non-lethal weapon for protection um for their family or for themselves. Um, having this heavy restrictions, I just wanted to know, that's why I asked HPD and I asked you same question. Why, why is it so um much so that you guys wanna, I mean, what, what prompted this heavy restrictions and registrations? If we're not having an overwhelming um unlawful use of an electric or stun gun?
Well, until recent, uh, well, currently we have a total ban. So it's hard to say what would suddenly occur if the ban is lifted in its entirety.
Yes.
There has been a couple of very recent um incidents where stun guns were used illegally in the commission of crimes. So there are um public safety issues that this bill tries to balance with people's right, as you say, to use a electric gun for self-defense.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions on uh, on the electric gun bill? Okay, thank you very much, all the testifiers who are here. We'll go ahead and move on to HB eight ninety-five relating to credit for time of detention prior to sentence. So clarify that defendants may not earn credit on a sentence imposed for a subsequent conviction for time being served on a previous felony conviction. First up on eight ninety-five is Landon Murata, Deputy Attorney General.
Morning Chair Rhodes and members of the committee, Deputy Attorney General Landon Murata on behalf of the department. The department is in strong support of this bill. The uh department submitted written testimony in support and would, I'd like to highlight the main thrust of our testimony are uh to the members of the committee is that in twenty twelve, when the subsection three was first passed, it's pretty clear that the intent of the legislature was to ensure that defendants who commit crimes while they are serving a sentence don't get credit for time served pending, basically pending trial on their subsequent offense um when they're sentenced. This would avoid the issue, the, the situation where someone's already serving a sentence and they can commit however many crimes without any type of um accountability or uh punishment. So the bill that's been introduced solves that problem that was created when uh the Supreme Court in state, the Abihi, ruled that subsection one still controls and that, that defendant will get credit in spite of subsection three. So it clarifies that subsection one uh notwithstanding, the defendant will not get credit. Um, other than that, I think that summarizes the testimony and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's see who's next here. Um, uh William Bento, Department of Public Par, oh, suddenly can't speak English. Department of Public Safety. No, sorry. State of Hawaii Office of Public Defender, my bad.
No problem. Thank you very much.
Need new glasses, I guess. Good morning.
Thank you very much, uh Chair Rhodes and members of the committee. Uh, my name is William Bento. I'm a member of the uh Public Defender's Office. Um, we oppose this bill and in our written testimony, we outlined three reasons and I'd just like to highlight those. Deputy Attorney General Murata did uh talk about the Abihi case. One of the things that, that was said in Abihi is that um we have constitutional questions that come up when there's a conflict in, in the section one and section three, as well as constitutional issues dealing with giving a person credit for the time that they have earned while incarcerated. And so first of all, uh, subsequent to Abihi, the Supreme Court decided a case called State versus James Thompson. And in that case, they clearly stated that uh that there can be a violation of double jeopardy when you deny a person their pre-sentence detention credit, then sentence that person and make that person serve that same period of time over again. In other words, they would be serving the same period of time in jail twice. And so the, you know, the common usage of double jeopardy is you don't put a person on trial twice. But in reality, it's also mean, it also means that you cannot punish the person twice for the same offense. And changing subsection three uh as proposed in the bill would do so. Also, it has a chilling effect on a person who requests a jury trial because while they're waiting for their jury trial, they're not receiving any credit. And this could take months, if not longer, at times. And so some people may give up their right to a trial just to get credit. And lastly, in Abihi itself, the court said that the rule of lenity, if there's an ambiguity between subsection one and subsection three, has to um be ruled in favor of the defendant. So even if this change occurs.
Very much. Next up is uh Max Otani for Department of Public Safety in support. Next is Office of Hawaiian Affairs with comments. Next is Wendy Hudson for the, for Hudson Law LLC in opposition. That's all the testimony we have on HB eight ninety-five. Members, any questions on HB eight ninety-five?
Um, Chair.
Senator Casio, go ahead.
I have a question for Deputy Attorney General. If available.
Um. Yes, Senator.
So currently, judges, um do current, do they currently have discretion to order consecutive sentencing when, when, for, for crimes when someone is not in jail?
Yes, they can. They can at sentencing on the subsequent offense, run that term of incarceration subsequent to the prior offense.
Hmm. And then this measure would, would uh remove judicial discretion, correct? I'm sorry?
No, sorry. The, the, the court can still run the terms consecutive. What, what this measure does is say, because you're already serving a sentence and you were serving that sentence when you committed your subsequent offense, you're not going to get credit for the times where you're serving that sentence on the new offense.
Okay. Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? If not, thank you very much, testifiers for being here. We'll go ahead and move on to the next bill, which is HB eleven oh seven relating to computer crime. Adds aggravated harassment by stalking to the list of offenses upon which the offensive of use of a computer in the commission of a separate crime may be based. Provides the court with the discretion to require the forfeiture of property used in computer crimes if the perpetrator was a minor, regardless of whether the minor owned the property. First up on eleven oh seven is Brooke Connor or Ms. Dr. Christina Kishimoto for the Department of Education.
Aloha, Chair Rhodes, committee members. This is Brooke Connor. I'm the CIO for the Department of Education. Uh, we will stand on our written testimony offering uh comments on this measure. We're available for any questions. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Uh, next is Darcia Forster, Office of Public Defender.
Aloha, Chair Rhodes and members of the committee. We uh did submit some comments. We'll stand on our written testimony, but we do acknowledge the change has been made to allow for some discretion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is uh Michael Kunishima uh for Honolulu Police Department, I believe he's captain. I don't see him. Uh, let's see, they were, HPD is in support. Michael Gallo, Jr. for the LGBT Caucus of Democratic Party of Hawaii.
Uh, good morning. Uh, good morning, Senators. Thank you. Uh, on behalf of Michael Gallo, on behalf of the Elizabeth Caucus and the Democratic Party of Hawaii, we thank you for hearing this bill. Uh, we, we understand, we want, we know that it's time to bring our laws up to what is needed with regards to cyberbullying. We believe that this does this, it doesn't create a pipeline uh to prisons for those and it gives a way for, to address cyberbullying and uh cyber stalking. So we encourage you to pass this bill. Emma Hall for hearing it.
Thank you. Uh, next is Dara Carlin in support. And that's all the testimony we have on HB eleven oh seven. Members, any questions?
Chair, um, let's see. Anyone is here. I was just curious if a judge already has the discretion to take a computer. But I'm not sure exactly on this who would.
I don't know. The Department of Education might know. I don't know. Um, Mr. Connor, are you still here?
Uh, I am, I am still here. Um, obviously, I'm, I'm not a lawyer and uh a master of the, the section of the, the law. Certainly, um, a school could restrict access to um a computer for a student. They couldn't seize the student's or their family's computer. Um, we could certainly prevent access to school systems for somebody in a bullying situation. And that's something that the schools would do there as well. I believe the um statute on seizure of property is fairly broadly worded in the case of, of convictions. Um, but um, again, I'm, I'm not the, the expert on that area.
Senator Casio?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, members? Okay, let me look down my list here. Okay, okay. Uh, if, if there are no other questions, let's go ahead and move on to uh HB thirteen twenty-six allows a narrow hearsay exception for statements made by domestic violence victims during the course of the first interaction with responding law enforcement officers and before the arrest of the defendant, as long as the statement bears sufficient indicia of reliability. First on thirteen twenty-six is James Tabe, uh, the Public Defender.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair. Good morning to the members of, the members of the committee. Uh, the alleged statements, the alleged victim's statements about a domestic violence incident made to the police officer responding to a domestic disturbance call. Uh, and the purpose of the police officer being there is to investigate the crime will never, will not survive the confrontation clause of the uh Hawaii Constitution as well as the federal Constitution. I think it's, it's outlined in my uh written testimony. Uh, so even if this exception is created, no judge should be allowing the statement to come in. Uh, it just can't survive it because you can't legislate what testimonial is. It's uh testimonial is grounded in the Constitution. It's an analysis, it's a test. I believe the uh judiciary, the evidence committee standing uh evidence committee has also submitted testimony. And I just want to note, the members of that committee are um not just judges. Uh, they're prosecutors, uh law professors, as well as esteemed uh prominent members of the uh, of the bar. So um, I think we're all in agreement that I mean, I know the reason why this wants to, the people want this to be passed, but it's just not going to work. And it's uh, I just can't see how it's going to get admitted into evidence, any of those statements. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is uh Judge Catherine Migio for the State of Hawaii Judiciary in opposition, Dara Carlin in support, Gerard Silva in opposition. And that's all the written test, that's all the testimony we have. Uh, members, any questions for Mr. Tabe? Um, I guess I have a question for you. So, I mean, Oregon, my understanding is Oregon has a similar uh hearsay exception. And has it been challenged? Has it been upheld? Do you know?
It hasn't been challenged yet. I don't know how often they use it. Uh, it seems like if the state constitution allows it, the federal constitution shouldn't allow it uh because it's pretty straightforward at this point.
There are, there are other except, I mean, there's a whole list of hearsay exceptions, of course.
Right.
Some of them apply to the right of confrontation, don't they?
Right. Uh, they do. It depends if it's test, if it's, yeah, see, if, if they're available, if the witness is available, if the witness is at court, the statement may come in with, for impeachment purposes or whatever, but there's if the statement is deemed what we call testimonial, then the witness needs to be available for the defendant to cross-examine and confront that person.
Isn't this a situation where the declaration is for all intents and purposes not available because they're in fear of their life?
No, there's no, now, there's an exception if there was some wrongdoing by the defendant, you know, threatening them. There's, there's exception. Uh, but see, it depends. If this, if the statement is testimonial, they, they have to be there because otherwise we're going to have a situation where a person could get convicted without even seeing their accuser in court, you know, that's just, that's not how our system was, you know, this.
Well, people, people, people plead guilty all the time without seeing their uh.
Right. Well, that's because they decide to give up those rights, you know, when you plead guilty, so.
I don't know. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't seem as, it, it compared to your testimony, it just doesn't seem like as big a stretch to uh, to call someone who's been in fear of their life not available. Uh, we'll see. I mean, obviously, the courts, if we pass this, the courts will want to get to decide it ultimately, but uh I, I don't know. Members, any other questions?
Yeah, yes.
Senator Favela?
Uh, maybe I need a little bit of clarification. Uh, so let's just say right now, I'm, I'm in a, involving a domestic violence and I'm assaulted in my home and I press charges and it goes, person gets arrested and go all the way. And then I decide to drop the charges. Don't the state just automatically take it over anyway?
Yes, the state takes it over and they will uh, uh, well, the state takes it over and it's up to the prosecutor to decide to whether to continue it or not.
Yeah, it depends. I mean, it depends on whatever other evidence the prosecutor has. Yes, I agree, it's out of their control. But it, if, if they're the only witness, which is often the case in these kind of domestic violence situations, then the case is usually dead. So. Senator Favela, more questions? Okay, thanks. Okay, members, I think that brings us to, thank you to Mr. Tabe for joining us today. Um, I think that brings us to the end of the testimonial part, speaking of testimonial uh statements. Uh, let's see, do we have quorum? Senator Kim, are you here? Uh, okay, here's Senator Lee. That gives us quorum. Um, okay, so I'm, I'm ready to go ahead and make um make recommendations unless, unless someone has a desire to go into the breakout room.
I was convinced I lost last night to the big bosses. So for me, I'm a little salty today, but uh.
I'm sorry, who's this? Okay. Um, so.
I think Senator, it it might be a good idea to go into breakout room. This is Eileen and and right before Jesse was speaking.
Okay.
I was not speaking, thank you.
Do we need to go into the breakout breakout room? I don't, so Eileen or or Jesse, do we need to go in the break breakout room?
I think it's helpful.
I I did not request that, um, I.
Okay, let's go into breakout room for a second. Um, Leving, I guess you're with us today. If we could go to the breakout room. Okay, welcome back to the Judiciary Committee this morning, this Friday morning. Uh, we'll be doing voting, voting on those measures that were on our nine thirty agenda. First up is HB nine, I mean four ninety. This lowers the age at which enhanced penalties apply for crimes against seniors from sixty-two to sixty. Makes commission of certain criminal offenses against a senior's person or property applicable if the perpetrator knows or reasonably should know the the seniors, senior victims' age. Uh, recommendation on four ninety is to pass with some amendments. We'll restore the language that protects an individual receiving case management. Management services in a hospital, healthcare provider's office, or in a home. I think it was an, I think it was just a mistake on the, in the. The House draft and this restores it to the original intent of the law. And then we'll also make it effective upon approval. Questions or concerns? If not, Senator Lee is kind, is being kind enough to take votes for us today.
Thanks. Voting on HB four ninety, recommendation to pass with amendments. Chair?
Aye.
Uh, vice chair is excused. Senator Acasio?
Reservations.
Senator Gabbard excused. Senator Kim?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. And Senator Favela?
Aye.
Chair, measure adopted.
Thank you very much. Next up is HB five sixty-six relating to abusive family or household member. This adds course of control between family or household members to the offense of abuse. Of family or household members as a petty misdemeanor. Uh, recommendation here is to pass with some amendments. Uh, like we did with the Senate version, we'll add this um course of control element to. The Act nineteen that was a pilot program that we passed last year. And so that will, it expires in less than five years now. And we'll also make it effective upon approval. Questions or concerns?
Thank you, Chair Rhodes. Um, I do have some large concerns with this bill, although I do. Wholeheartedly understand the intent and want uh, you know, to work towards protecting um victims in abuse situations. Um, I want to make note that that even the attorney general is opposed to this bill. Uh, being that it's the behavior listed in their quote not suited for criminal prosecution. And also to really address the vagaries in a lot of the language. So. Mahalo.
Understood. I, it's. Of course, on, in this committee, we ignore somebody's advice every single time we vote, so that part of it doesn't particularly bother me. But thi- this is, this course of control is is a real thing. And uh I, it is difficult to get at, and so the bills that we use to try to get at it are also difficult. So this is, you know, this is a pilot program. If it, if it crashes and burns, then we won't, we won't read it up uh when the time comes.
And just to uh to explain myself also is that I come from the perspective of um uh not so much adding to more criminalization, but rather looking at it from a place of uh of uh. You know, um rehabilitation and support to begin with. So that's a lot of also where my my vote is coming from.
Other concerns, members? If not, Senator Lee?
Thank you. Voting on HB five sixty-six, HD one, recommendation to pass with amendments, noting excused absence of Senators Keo Hokolole and Gabbard, as well as the reservations of Senator Acasio. Are there any other reservations? Any notes? Reservations for.
Sorry, mine's a no vote.
Oh, my apologies. Uh, no for uh Acasio, WR for Favela. Anyone else? If not, Chair, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next up is HB eight ninety-one relating to electric guns. This regulates the sale and use of electric guns and cartridges. Uh, recommendation here is to pass with a couple of amendments, a lot of technical amendments. And it will make it effective upon approval, but with an implement date, implementation date of January one, twenty twenty-two. So that the um, the counties can get their forms and stuff together. Questions or concerns? If not, uh, Senator Lee?
Voting on HB eighty-one, HD two, recommendation to pass with amendments, noting excused absence of Senators Keo Hokolole and Gabbard. Are there any reservations? Any notes? If not, Chair, recommendation is adopted. Oh, no for Senator Favela.
Yes.
Reservations.
And reservations for Senator Acasio.
Okay. Thank you. Next is HB eight ninety-five relating to credit for time of detention prior to sentence. Clarifies that defendants may not. Earn credit on a sentence imposed for a subsequent conviction for time being served on a previous felony conviction. Uh, recommendation here is to pass with technical amendments only. Questions or concerns? Senator Lee?
Uh, voting on HB eight ninety-five, recommendation to pass with amendments, noting excused absence of Senators Keo Hokolole and Gabbard. Are there reservations? Any? No for Senator Favela?
No.
And Senator Acasio? Uh, if no one else, then Chair, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next up is HB eleven oh seven relating to computer crime. This adds aggravated harassment by stalking to the list of offenses upon which the offensive. Use of computer in the commission of a separate crime may be based and it provides the court with the discretion. To require the forfeiture of property used in computer crimes if the perpetrator was a minor, regardless of whether the minor owned the property. Uh, recommendation here is to pass with technical amendments. Questions or concerns? If not, Senator Lee?
HB eleven oh seven, HD one, recommendation to pass with amendments, noting the excused absence of Senators Keo Hokolole and Gabbard. Are there any reservations?
Reservations.
So noted. Any notes?
Reservation.
Okay. Noting the reservations of Senators Acasio and Favela, recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next up is HB thirteen twenty-six. This allows a narrow hearsay exception for statements made by domestic violence victims during the course of the first interaction with responding law enforcement officers. And before the arrest of the defendant, as long as the statement bears sufficient indicia of reliability. Uh, recommendation here is to pass with an amendment and just making it effective upon approval. Questions or concerns? Senator Acasio?
Chair Rhodes, thank you. I will be voting in opposition to this based on um. Uh, my understanding of the constitutional conflict and also, yeah, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, Senator Lee for the vote.
HB thirteen twenty-six, HD one, recommendation to pass with amendments, uh noting excused absence of Senators Keo Hokolole and Gabbard. As well as the no vote of Senator Acasio. Are there any other reservations?
Reservation.
So noted on both.
Reservations.
Yep. Reservations for Senator Kim. Yes, no vote for Senator Favela.
Okay.
Otherwise, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much, members. So that's it for today. We're adjourned. See you in session. Mahalo.